All right, I call it ordered that Lynchburg Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, August 24, 2016. There are no minutes to approve. I do want to thank everyone for their time and enthusiasm at the last meeting and Mark for running the show. I think this one will go a lot easier. First order of business is the presentation of the fiscal year 2016 annual report.
Sure, this is the 12th annual report outlining the implementation of the comprehensive plan and the activities of the planning commission. Ms. Freshison did the heavy lifting on this, so thank you for doing that, Rachel. We do not plan on going through it line by line or item by item, but this is based off of the implementation matrix that is in the comprehensive plan that was adopted by council back in 2013. So hopefully you've had an opportunity to look over it and review it, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. As in years past, once the planning commission has reviewed and feels comfortable with it, we forward it on to council for information purposes. Okay?
Any questions or comments on the report?
I had a couple of questions, just because since they're on here, it doesn't mean we have anything to do with them, right? Or even see them.
Quite possibly, yes.
Like on the first page, the downtown riverfront master plan, canal park concept design is complete. I didn't know that was complete, but...
Which one?
The canal park concept design that's complete now. When did that get complete? Because I thought they were just looking at ideas a couple of months ago.
Any ideas?
I don't. The matrix is filled in by the individual departments, so if they did not give me a date, then I don't have a date. Parking records will need department on that project. So we just, we don't have anything to do with a lot of these things. The parking meter pilot evaluation was supposed to be complete in January, but we don't have anything to do with that.
Correct, but it is kind of related to the downtown riverfront master plan, which was ultimately recommended by the planning commission.
And I do know there's interest by members of the planning commission in the past to see more of the big picture of what was going on beyond what specifically came in front of us, so that we can consider things in light of what else is happening.
Right, and I think that would be a good point of discussion during the next item discussion, what you'd like to talk about at your retreat.
I'd have a question. I looked in here at the Tyreanna master plan.
Sure.
And, you know, just remembering back, I don't know, maybe 10 or 15 years ago, this community idea they had there, and that was a big point of contention with the trucking company that's in here, that I wasn't on the planning commission when they changed that. It made sense to me, but is there a timeline for how that plan will be changed?
Great question. The other thing we're working on right now is a five-year CIP. And basically, the city has more projects than it has funding. The other document that we've been working on and hopefully we'll share with you at a later date is a implementation matrix of all the plans and where we are with it. And, you know, Tyreanna, for example, Tyreanna had a lot of issues facing it. One was the closure of the landfill. Other things identified in the Tyreanna plan were like when the city was considering opening up on land on the other side of Concord Turnpike for a landfill. There was discussions of a village center. Big issue with Tyreanna is sewer service. How do you sewer that area? So not a lot has really changed in that plan. I think it's, a lot of the things are still relevant, though, like gateways into that neighborhood and the lane use patterns that were supposed to be established, and that's why we were not favorable in recommending the trucking company. But at some point, what we're trying to decide on, on as staff, is whether or not it makes sense to revisit Tyreanna right now, or if we should be looking at another area where there's actual funding going to. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Well, I mean, I think this, if you look at the list of petitions, I mean, this reflects a lot of work by city staff, and I think especially them, but also members of the commission deserve some kudos for participating in these items. I think it shows, there's a lot of good petitions, a lot of active things taking place in the city. And we also didn't recommend approval for 100% of the items, and I think that's healthy, too. We don't, we're not here to rubber stamp, but considering the items and make an educated vote. So thanks, Rachel, for putting this together, and for all the other work city planning has done that we often don't see but the, but a little tip of the iceberg on. Any other comments? I forget, Tom, do we need to recommend or take a vote on this to send it to council, or do we, is it a decision?
I think just a motion to forward it to council.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion. Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
All in.
Opposed? Alright, motion passes. Thank you very much. The second item on the agenda is discussion of the planning commissioner retreat.
Alright, so staff has some ideas of what we think would be beneficial to the commission, but I don't want to start the discussion with those yet, because I'd like to hear from you first, what types of things you would like to see covered. We'd like to know, is there any information that you would like to have that you're not getting in the reports, other reports being beneficial to you, and so forth. But I think Mr. Rogers, this was, was this one of your ideas that you want to have this retreat? Which is great.
Yeah.
But hopefully, I mean, we'd like to open up to discussion and see what you would like to actually do, cover, if there's anyone you'd like to hear from in particular, pick a date, see if we can get some time on your calendar for that.
And my reasoning, you know, because we had talked about it, that, you know, we were attending the certified planning commissioner class, and it's interesting, the range of influence that planning commissions have throughout the state, you know, where some of the people we met with actually had assistance. Of course, there are really busy areas, you know, Northern Virginia. But one of the things that, you know, was impressed on me is the ability to, the planning commission to be really more involved in things than just showing up, reading these reports, and then voting and being gone. And so my thought was, how do I know what's going on within the community and within the broader range of planning that goes on? So we have the, the technical review committee, you know, do, I don't know what they do exactly, and I don't know how they weigh in, but I felt like some of that stuff would be important to know. And that's where, where I was thinking, getting together, trying to understand some of that, have people who are involved. We actually are taking a class with the guy who's on the technical review committee. It's pretty interesting, you know, to hear his, his background.
Tom Wood.
Yeah, in the electric, the utilities, and his background in that. And then the other thing is, you know, just kind of getting to know one another and the philosophies behind the way we think as a committee. You know, since we're not discussing any, any business, per se, any item of business, it's not, it's not something that, you know, I feel like is a, something we, you know, we have to, you know, you know, being super public about as much as just understanding where people's background and where they come from, you know, what, for example, on the Ants and Doo, you do history, and you're into the historical society, right? Some involvement in that, you know, but, but that's really all I know. So I'd like to know more about that, so us as a group, but also different people, maybe more jet glass who is in economic development, and can kind of give us some idea of what they're trying to do. And, you know, that would be just one example.
Well, it sounds like a starting point, aside from personal interactions, would be like a vision for the city that does come across in pieces, either be the news, or the city newsletter, or emails, but something that, as a commission, we don't get, you know, as a, as a group. And I think that goes back to what Champ, and he was the one who brought this up originally, the idea of knowing more of what's going on beyond what's just comes in front of us, because that can help us make decisions. Again, what we saw in that report, even things that we weren't voting on, it was nice to see the big picture of where things are happening and when they're happening. And I think that's very useful. And I definitely seen that at least once a year, I thought was, I think is good.
So I was excited by Tom saying about the list of projects that are going on, so you see what else, I thought that would be helpful as well.
Yeah, so this leads into kind of what we're thinking. So what I'm hearing is you'd like to, wanting to get to know each other better, kind of get each other's backgrounds, which would be great information, I'm pretty sure, because, you know, it's a fairly new commission, you really haven't worked together for any great length of time yet. And, and I think that's fine, because each of you bring a unique perspective to the table. Understanding the city's review process, and maybe how it works, the technical review committee, and what its role is. Understanding what, you know, what economic development's role is, and what they see, what they do, and maybe what they see coming out of the pipe. Better understanding of when and where things are happening. So that's, that's what I've heard you say. What, what I think would be good for this commission, since it is, is a fairly new commission, and the majority of you were not involved with a lot of the area of plans, would be to spend some time, you know, hearing, hearing some presentations, getting an overview of the city's comprehensive plan, which is really, which you guys should be looking at in great detail and making your decisions, because that document really sets the vision and the tone for the city. But then, more importantly, it, well, not more importantly, but just, just as important, is having a presentation and getting a good understanding of all the area plans that we have. History, Midtown, Downtown, Tyreanna. And that would be a good time for us to kind of share with you where we are in implementing it, right? So, I mean, do you guys, do all of you know that we have a Wards Ferry Road study?
I know you mentioned that.
Okay, well, we do.
And we had a traffic with Atlantic Avenue, and I'm gonna drive down and say, yeah, Tom, we have sidewalks coming down here one day, like, sure, like that.
One day, I mean, Atlanta, but, you know...
But I think, too, you gotta understand, I go back to our first meeting, there are a lot of things, we've been on this for a long time, I got a lot of ideas about how things ought to go, but I remember the first meeting, walking away and going, I didn't even realize that side of it even existed. So, yeah, I can say I know what you got planned for Wards Ferry, but I can assure you that I don't have a clue the depth of your perspective, if that makes any sense. I know there's a bunch of stuff I don't know, based on where you're coming from.
Well, right, and you don't know unless we kind of communicate about it. And so we were thinking that a good overview of the city's plans, so that you would kind of be thinking about these things. So like, when the petition came in front of you about the trucking company, right? You know, maybe if we had had the opportunity to talk about Tyreanna, and you guys had more information about that plan, maybe it would have changed your opinion, maybe or not, but at least you would have been thinking about it and would understand where the staff was coming from. So that's, that's one of the big things. We, we think that would take a little while to do, but it would definitely be worth it for you guys to get a better understanding of the plan.
Are you gonna give the city council the same little lesson?
When they invite me to their retreat. Maybe they can watch the tape.
Well, I mean, I knew, I know about a lot of the plans, I did not know about the Tyreanna plan until that item came before us. And I know that some of the other plans have not been implemented, like the safety, the 221 safety study, there were items in there that planning commissioners could take to heart, in terms of how things were being done, in terms of limited access and additions. And if you're not familiar with those presentations that were given three years ago, it would be useful.
So, and, and beyond that, after that, we'd kind of like to have a conversation with you about, you know, maybe what other areas of the city we should be looking at. We have some ideas on how that may go, and, and recommendations on what, what areas we all, we should be planning next, but ultimately, we need to hear from you, because we can't just initiate a plan from your back end.
Could we, in addition to the comp plan overview, have something more about how the food and the comp plan are together? It's just very confusing.
Okay, well, sure. I mean, the future land use map is definitely a component of the comp plan, but we can definitely talk about that. Rachel and Anne, did you guys have any thoughts?
I think we've covered it pretty well.
Sounds great. Between y'all's questions and Tom's proposal, I think we'll have a lot to do.
And if you, if you want to give us homework beforehand, things that you want us to read up on, or just to, hey, here's, take a look at the comp plan, I mean, we've already seen it, but, you know, here's, but feel free to do that. Or if there's anything that you feel like we should read ahead of time in terms of some of these city, citywide plans, or we think that would be beneficial, tell us, tell us ahead, and we'd be glad to come in a little bit prepared, maybe, and maybe even save some time that way, too.
I know this is a rural plan, but not ecologically friendly, but I love have a copy. Because, I mean, have that federal, the future land use thing, it's easier for me to sit there and read it, and scroll through a computer, try and remember what screen I saw it on, and how many pages. I sit there and know exactly where to post it, but I look, I do it right back to them.
I'm with you. I'm watching it, too. There you go. So we can get you, I mean, we can get you hard topics if you want.
Yeah, I know it's a thoughtful point, I mean, I'm very beautiful.
Do you have one?
No, I just, I can go get it, I can file it, and then...
So you have the comp...
I have the future land use package that you gave out two or three weeks ago.
The comprehensive plan. That's what that is.
Well, yeah, I have this.
Right. But do you mean, do you mean each of the individual area plans?
Because we can give you those in hard topics.
Yeah, that'd be not true, where I mean, you can actually sit down and read through it, like, watch the TV, whatever, I mean, you just spread this product, when I read.
You can walk over after the meeting, and we'll give you a copy of each one, and it's right in front of us.
I was asked to print them.
Well, a lot of those, I would find it useful to have those available in our Dropbox, maybe, or links.
They are in there.
They're in there?
Yeah, the, it says Lynchburg Comprehensive Plan.
I know the comp plan is, but all these...
All the other ones are in there, yeah.
Okay, there are. Where are they located?
Let me see, let me look at that.
They're under Lynchburg Comprehensive Plans, Accompanying Plans.
I can name it something else if you find it, if you can find it easier, but I called it Lynchburg Comprehensive Plan and Accompanying Plans. Do you want?
Okay, I'm, sometimes I'll have that in my Dropbox.
Okay, I'll call it Area Plans.
Okay. I've never looked in that folder.
And some of these are partially complete, aren't they? Like the wardrobe, the estuary.
Partially. I think it's really interesting when you, you know, Anne put together a, I don't design anything. She put together a kind of a thermometer of the different plans, green being complete.
Okay. I'm getting frustrated, this.
Well...
Yellow being in progress.
I don't have it on mine.
I don't see it just kind of...
It's in the planning, shouldn't be... It's under Planning Commission?
Right.
In the folder, Planning Commission.
Wait a minute, let me just double check. No, it should be outside of the Planning Commission.
Oh, okay.
So...
Alright, there's Planning Commission.
Yeah, so you can see the green ones, like Downtown, Fistery.
Yeah. I have it.
I don't see what the location is on those.
Fistery, I know there's, I have, I've heard, this was back, that, that from the traffic circles south, they're gonna put that eventually, is that?
They should be able to be deleted.
Close it for the same sewer project they did.
You guys shouldn't have access to those, so you wanna get rid of Sharon's...
Yeah, it's under, under discussion.
Yeah, like, those are mine. You guys shouldn't, you guys shouldn't have, I'll, I'll...
Apple hates me, it normally doesn't give me extra stuff.
So, alright, Mark, did you find your...
Well, that explains why I saw these new pictures coming, I couldn't figure out how they got there, because I know they put them on there.
Alright. I'm just hearing, um, Planning Commission.
So it's highlighted.
See what you mean, you're, now, see, they've got extra stuff, and you don't have everything, but I'll, I'll, you might need to be sending an invitation to that folder. You should have it. Do you have it?
Yeah.
Okay, so how do I send it to my folder?
I'll do that right now.
Alright, so maybe after the meeting, we can work out the technical...
Yeah. My daughter's in Charlotte, my son is...
So, yeah, and those are the things that we can definitely give you, staff, but the next phase of Fistery, which is Phase Three, from Jackson to Taylor, is in the city CIP fiscal year '17. So we're looking to start construction next year.
Eighteen?
Eighteen, I'm sorry.
This is, we're in '17?
Eighteen, fiscal year '17. So we're looking to start in July of '17, so it's fiscal year '17.
The Fistery?
Yeah, Phase Three.
It says fall/winters of '17. Yeah. It's gonna start on fall.
So when they're doing the sewer plans, for example, the combined CSO, are you all involved in that?
Yes and no. What we try to do is we try to tag along where they're working at, because it's, there's economies there, right? And really, one of the only ways that we were able to make Fistery for, and Knight Street's another great example, is when they have to come in and replace that infrastructure, you know, they're tearing up the street, they're tearing up sidewalks, so we can go in and, you know, a portion of that's billed to the water sewer funds, whereas the general fund doesn't have to cover all of it. So it makes a lot of sense for us to understand the areas that they're working in, and how it correlates to these planners, so we can try and get more implementation of that stuff. But yes, we try to communicate across departments, and we do a pretty good job of that. But it sounds like you guys want us to do a better job communicating that with you, which is interesting.
I think we just want to be educated as much as we can.
Well, everybody's done it, definitely.
And I think the other thing is, you know, I wonder, you know, some of the impacts from those projects, you know, if that isn't something that, you know, if there's a way to mitigate those a little bit better, like we saw in Bedford Avenue, which I thought was definitely, you know, really hurt, I think hurt that area, you know, is there a better way to mitigate those, and is that something planning does, or is it something the planning commission can be involved in? I don't, I don't know, but...
Yeah, that's, that's, it's a good discussion, but I can tell you, it's always in the front, in the forefront, is, you know, trying to minimize any negative impacts during project instruction, but, you know, in the end, it is a construction project, and unfortunately, there are things that go along with that. But I mean, you, you have things like, if you shut the road down, you might get the project done sooner, might be finished more quickly, it might be cheaper, but is that better for it to take eight months or keep a lane open and take a year and a half, right? And it costs more, you still got impacts going on there, so you kind of have to juggle this.
One thing I would like to learn more about is the, the way the city members are, we have this section of 221 that goes from Market, that new grocery store over there.
Press Market, yeah.
Press Market. And then you go down 221, then you go back over there to the, what is it?
Enterprise.
Hmm?
Enterprise Drive?
Enterprise Drive, and you go further one down there to the Winters Housing thing there, which, and it's in the city. All these things that was going on along 221, but it's not, in our purview, because Bedford County, but what they're doing there does impact on the city of Lynchburg.
And vice versa, yeah.
And there's some things that just make you go, hmm, like that lake behind playing against Oates that got filled, or halfway filled up with dirt without the news about environmental impact statements. You get approvals, and you sort of like, hmm, how do you get to do that? And be on a bad position. It's on Bedford County's side, it's on Bedford County's side there, so it's not our problem.
One of our problems?
No.
Good, okay.
But, but those impacts, I mean, what's going on in 221, and how it's gonna end up affecting that part of Lynchburg?
Regional...
That's what we're talking about. That's where we have left to develop.
Regional issues and regional planning, which, you know, one of the things that the commissions have done periodically is, is gotten together the commissions for discussions. I think that's good practice, and it sounds like you continue to support that. But, you know, one of the things that was really interesting for us to work on was that 221 study, because that really was a regional study that went from Bedford County through to the city of Lynchburg, which kind of goes along with what you're talking, more regional planning.
Is the 29, I went to the 29, the, but they had some proposal, six mile section of 29 from the city limit south to 24 that VDOT's working on, is the city being involved in that, or is that gonna be strictly a Campbell County project in, in VDOT?
If it's in Campbell County, more than likely would be just VDOT and Campbell County. Our engineering folks may be more involved than we are. I can tell you that Anne and myself, and I believe it's maybe Cosman, serve on what's called Transportation Technical Committee, which is a regional transportation group that looks at these things, so through that committee, we are aware of regional transportation projects, maybe not as aware as we should be all the time, but, and that's an opportunity for the, at least city staff to comment on them.
Well, now, the big challenge.
When? Shut up, I forgot my calendar.
Champ, Champ is back in September?
Um, I think it's October. I think it's, yeah. I could check what we put down in the minutes, but I want to say it was like, first meeting in October, maybe he was planning on getting back.
And I was actually thinking along the lines of mid-October for this. That'll give us an opportunity to finish up some of this work that we're trying to do on implementation of plans, give you guys an opportunity to get back up to full strength, give us time to prepare.
Talking about weekday kind of thing?
Originally, that's what I was thinking, but it's up to you, if you want to do a weekend, do that, too, but, maybe we think... You know, are we talking about the majority of the day? Sounds like you might want to plan for that, especially with the presentations. Honestly, we'll secure a venue somewhere outside of City Hall, hopefully.
Would it, would it be useful, maybe more info that we can handle, but the folks let Robin know if there's days of the week that... Robin know if there's days of the week that they prefer or to exclude?
I could do like a, the doodle thing, where I send out, you know, a calendar, and you guys tell me which days work for you, and then, you know, kind of by process of elimination, we figure out what's a good day, could do that, it's a meeting scheduler.
Yep, I think that's all I can...
So I'll start with maybe like, the third week in October, second?
Yeah, I'm thinking like an off week from the plan.
Mm-hmm.
Question, maybe the seventeenth?
Yeah, maybe start there and go into like, two, two weeks of October, if we have to, we'll get into the first week of November. I know, try to do it in October.
And I don't know whether or not Cham is getting...
Yeah, I'm looking for, I'm looking for my own...
I think you, I'm, I'm sure he's gonna be back October, I'm not sure if he's checking his emails to participate in this.
Yeah.
Especially, he's retired, so he should be...
Yeah, that's right, he can go.
I know, thank you very much.
Yeah, if we could do it like on a Monday or a Fri, well, on a Friday, so if we could do it on a Monday, that'd be great.
Alright.
So that's a quiet voice, but...
You guys can look for that, um, meeting scheduler to come out. I don't think Cham's been checking emails, so I might just have to get with him when, you know, when he gets back, and see if I can...
Did you check in?
No, especially if I was out of the country, I would not.
I would.
No, I think that's great, though, I think, like I said, if there's things you want to do beforehand, that gives us time to do it as well.
Well, and also, there's, you know, over the course of kind of leading up to what you think of things that you want for us to go on, or...
Well, and...
Other information, let us know.
Yeah, and sometimes just seeing an agenda helps, you know, helps us come up with things, too.
Okay.
Add one to Emmer's side, purely Emmer's, does Dunkin' Donuts have to do a conditional use program? Do you get one for a forest ready?
Nope, it's by right Dunkin' Donuts.
It wasn't an existing building.
Yeah, they weren't an existing building, so they're pretty much just retrofitting that building for them. So, and I did look at the minutes, he said he's going to be out until September 28th, so early October, a meeting, he should be back for that.
And I don't know whether, at the end of the day, whether we would all be interested, but we have done social events in like thirty minutes, and the day wrap-up might be nice.
Okay.
And I'll just throw it out, I think the House of Derm Development Group is, is retreating in Martha's Vineyard, so...
Nice.
I couldn't believe that, I asked twice, I know I'm right.
The homestead's pretty popular for, you know, state retreats.
Not all of it.
Not Martha, not Martha's Vineyard, okay.
Otter Creek, I think he break into that lodge, you know.
The Lynchburg, look at that.
The whole restaurant.
Yeah, yeah.
I love it.
Well, yeah, just keep us in the loop, and we'll, and we'll try and get something on, on books.
Must have worked.
What a place.
The tea room as a lunch. It's only one of those times.
You have it.
Well, that's what you used to eat.
Alright, any other, any other comments or thoughts on that? Any others, any other items, new, new items, anything we need to bring up?
Just that Leslie and Tom are getting ready to go back for their second part of their training.
Alright, good.
And you take all those tests, and you read all the books, and you answer all the questions?
Good, no, it's, the wrap-up, yeah, the wrap-up is good.
Are you enjoying?
He's going in a minute.
Alright, so do we have a motion to adjourn? A second?
Awesome.
Alright, all in favor?
Alright, nice.
We are adjourned, thank you all very much.